Ready or do I wait 30 seconds, 30 seconds, please? We are live. All right. Welcome everyone to February 22nd council meeting. I'd like to open the meeting and call to order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance and I'd like to ask council member Hilton to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mary Blankley. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice. Thank you.
All right, thank you. invocation Greg Quirk, are you here from South Valley Community? Oh yeah, there you are, South Valley Community Church, hello? You're on mute. Try it now.
How about now?
Okay, can hear you.
Hey, all right. Good to see everybody. Let's pray. Well, Father, we want to thank you for the many provisions that we have, the clean water, food in our stomachs, a roof over our heads and Lord, with that, we lift up those that are especially vulnerable in Texas and some of the other states that are dealing with very difficult circumstances. Those without food, power, shelter. We pray that you bring resources and provide for the enormous needs there. We also pray for an end to the pandemic that our economy can flourish once again, which is one of the greatest things about this country. And also the human resolve to never give up. We pray for our first responders from the nurses working at ER to the fire and police that keep us safe. And I pray for our city council members tonight, God, that this meeting would be fruitful as they engage the topics impacting our community. So with that, we pray in your name, amen.
Amen, thank you. All right, city clerks report on posting the agenda.
Tonight's agenda was posted on February 17th, 2021 at 11:15 a.m. Rebecca Armandares.
Present.
Dion Brocco. Zach Hilton.
Here.
Pedro La Romano.
Present.
Carol Marks.
Here.
Fred Tovar. Marie Blankley.
Here. And Fred Tovar asked me to announce that it's a family emergency that's kept him from being able to be here tonight. All right, orders of the day. All council members are participating remotely pursuant to the governor's executive order number N 2920. In order to minimize the spread of the COVID-19 virus. The meeting is being livestreamed from the city website, cityofgillroy.org and is viewable on cable channel 17 and on Facebook Live. Public comments can be made during the meeting by watching the meeting online and calling Or logging into Zoom at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash RB dot G Y forward slash nine five three K S five. And enter passcode seven four nine zero five five. When I call the item you wish to speak on, press star nine on your telephone keypad or use the raise your hand icon. Yeah, I'm moving on to employee promotion. We have Karen Garner.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I wanted to announce a recent promotion for Robert Carrera in the Community Development Department. And Robert was recently promoted from management analyst, trainee to management analyst. And some of his responsibilities are oversight of pretty much all fiscal and budget matters in the department, as well as managing our contracts and agreements, which are numerous. And Robert is actually a great example of an employee who has worked hard, taken on responsibilities and promoted up through the ranks, starting off as a city administration fellow. And now, you know, a couple stops later is now a management analyst. So I know I speak for the entire Community Development Department team when I say we appreciate having Robert as part of our team. And Robert is here this evening.
Yay, Robert, would you like to say anything?
Absolutely. Mayor, Mayor and Council. Needless to say, it has been very trying times. I've been here since 2017, so I've been through a couple of them, but throughout my whole journey here with the city of Gilroy. My resolve and my commitment has not wavered. And I've been I am honored and I am privileged to work here for the city of Gilroy. I want to thank City Administrator Forbes and Director Garner for their continued faith into my professional development and as well as all my colleagues with the city of Gilroy who have been very supportive me throughout this time. I look forward to the work ahead. I look forward to crafting new budget. I look forward to all the work we have to get done. We have better days ahead of us and I look forward to helping contribute to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you and congratulations. All right, Suzanne, would you mind checking the Zoom link and make sure that the correct Zoom link is being provided to the public?
Yes, there was an issue with the Zoom link that was originally there. We updated it and the correct one is now online and now reflected on Facebook.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Apologize. When you said the Zoom link, that was the old one. Suzanne, could you just go ahead and please verbalize it just to clear up any confusion? Thank you so much.
Absolutely, the new Zoom link is HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash RB dot G Y forward slash seven Q E R two two. And the passcode is seven four nine zero five five.
That is quite different than the one on my agenda. Okay, thank you. Sorry, everybody. Okay, proclamations. I get to read two. So we have, we're honoring two retirees tonight. Robert Bozo and Mitch Madruga, Bob Bozo. Okay, so whereas Robert, Bob Bozo, has served the city of Gilroy for over 25 years. 23 years as a facilities maintenance specialist and also as a volunteer firefighter. Bob had great pride for his community and working for the city. And it showed in his daily work. And whereas in Bob's service as facilities maintenance specialist, he assisted in many carpentry projects, adding and removing walls, building steps for the Wiley House, remodeling the Cherry Blossom apartment building, remodeling the computer training room at the annex and repairing and programming access gates. Bob also handled most of the building repairs at the three fire stations, as well as the Gilberton Museum. And whereas Bob worked hard to assist customers with a wide variety of facility issues. And if anyone could find a way to fix something, it was Bob. And whereas Bob was born in Gilroy in 1954 and was on the varsity football team at Gilroy High School. At Gilroy High School, he met his high school sweetheart, Tony, whom he later married in 1973. They have been happily married ever since. And whereas in his retirement from the city, Bob will be spending time with his friends and family. He will also have more time to enjoy some of his favorite hobbies that include fishing, camping and trips to Las Vegas. Now therefore, I, Marie Blankley, Mayor of the city of Gilroy and on behalf of the entire city council and all of the citizens and employees of Gilroy, join in thanking Bob Bozo for his commitment of service and wish him well in retirement for years to come. Yay, Bob, he is not here tonight, so we can all just clap and say yay. And I'll read the second one, he is also not here tonight. Okay, whereas Mitch Madruga has served the city of Gilroy and the Gilroy community for over 29 years, 22 of which were as police officer. And whereas Mitch began his career with the Gilroy Police Department in 1992 and has held the position of police reserve officer and police officer. And whereas Mitch served in many specialized positions during his career, major accident investigation team for 10 years, field training officer for two years, child abuse and sex crimes detective for five years and the department's sole arson investigator for 18 years. And whereas Mitch has dedicated himself to the highest standards of professionalism and excellence as a member of the Gilroy Police Department. And whereas on February 20th, 2021, Officer Mitch Madruga retired from the Gilroy Police Department with the sincere gratitude and appreciation of the Gilroy City Council for his years of dedicated public service to our fine city. Now therefore, I, Marie Blankley, Mayor of the city of Gilroy and on behalf of the entire city council and all of the citizens and employees of Gilroy, join in thanking Mitch Madruga for his commitment of service and wish him well in retirement for years to come. Again, yay. Thank you to both employees, happy retirement. All right, item three. Presentations to the council. Public comment by members of the public on items not on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Suzanne, do we have any people with public comments?
I have several hands raised. I am going to start with the phone number ending in nine three six two. I'm pushing allow to talk, you may unmute yourself. Again, the phone number ending in nine three six two, you can unmute yourself. Nine three six two, are you there?
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, this is Patrick Flott. I'm the Chair of the Gilroy Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. I'm requesting to place the Slow Streets program with possible action to adopt this National Association of City Transportation Officials, NACTO, program, which reduces traffic volume and speed on low volume streets to a minimum so that people can walk, bike and run safely during COVID-19 on a future agenda. Slow streets will prioritize walking and biking by limiting through traffic on residential streets. Simple tools such as temporary signs and cones will be used to divert traffic and slow down traffic. The California Vehicle Code states that motor vehicles still have right of way in the street. But these simple strategies are designed to ensure safety for people who are walking or jogging in the streets to maintain social distance. Access to driveways, deliveries and emergency services will be maintained for local residents. As a father of two young children who like to scooter and bike on the street and expect to do so safely, in addition to also being the Chair of the Gilroy B-PAC, which is tasked with recommending beneficial pedestrian and bicycle policies and programs to council for formal consideration. I want to stress that I find great value in the Slow Streets program. And I would like to see the council consider this proposed agenda item in the near future. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, next speaker.
The next speaker is Eugene Bernoski. I am pushing allow to talk now. I'm pushing in allow to talk now Eugene, Eugene, are you can unmute yourself?
Sorry about that, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, I am also calling to back up what Patrick just requested. I am the South Valley or Silicon Valley Bike Council, south of San Jose to the Monterey border lead, as well as somebody who bikes and walks our streets daily. I want to add to what Patrick said. I'm putting together the events in the month of May for the areas of Morgan Hill, San Martin and Gilroy for May Bike to Anywhere Month. And I've been looking and riding at every street I possibly can in Gilroy. And the amount of infrastructure we have is simply astounding from what we had when I moved here 20 years ago. And I need to say thank you and great work to city council and B-PAC in getting what we've got. I've also noticed a huge increase in the amount of pedestrians, scooters and bicycles out on the local residential streets. What I don't see is a lot of access to the merchants, whether it be Monterey or First Street or 10th Street. But I also noticed a couple of feeder streets that really aren't feeder streets that people use. For example, Ausley Drive between Mantelli and Wellburn, where people have actually put up their own cones and signage to slow down for the children. I see groups of six, eight and 10 cyclists. I have seen families on skateboards, scooters and bicycles and walking all within the same group in a lot of these streets. So with some minor accommodations, I, I think the Slow Street program is absolutely fantastic as it's been put to use in San Francisco, Oakland and a lot of other smaller communities. So I'd certainly like the city and B-PAC to take a look at this program officially and begin to consider it. That's basically my support for the Slow Streets program review. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
The next speaker is going to be Jay Gannon. I am hitting allow to talk now. You may unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Blankley and council members. My name is Gannon, a local Gavin student and a passionate outdoorsman, as well, I guess you could call it. I'm requesting to place the Slow Streets program on a future city council agenda. This program is one that reduces traffic loads on low capacity streets so residents can walk, bike and run safely during a time that had made these activities much more mainstream. Slow streets will prioritize walking and biking by limiting the traffic on residential streets, which is not only a win for pedestrians, but also commuters in terms of traffic backlog. By pairing with city street workers, we can utilize our resources such as street signs to slow down traffic in private safe areas for pedestrians to partake in outdoor activity. Not only can this program keep our citizens safe from vehicle danger, but also encouraging social distancing while partaking in enjoyed outdoor activity. As one who partakes in outdoor activity almost every day, I think this is a no brainer investment for members of Gilroy to take advantage of. Along with my support for this item, I also ask that this isn't placed on your council retreats that partakes on Saturdays such as past calls for the plan to end homelessness and bicycle parking plan. Though this is a retreat that allows public to make comments on, it's too much of an inconvenience for residents to give up their Saturday to wait for what could be hours to hear their one item they'd like to speak on. It's too much of an inconvenience for students like myself or families with children or working family members like many residents in Gilroy to share their voice. In closing, I would like to reiterate my support for the Slow Streets program for it's an investment for the physical and mental health of our citizens while also asking that it is brought to an agenda item, not the council retreats on Saturdays, which give residents a more convenient way to support this item and share their voice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next Suzanne.
The next speaker will be Michelle Wexler. I am hitting allow to talk now, you may unmute yourself.
Evening, city council. I'm Michelle Wexler, I'm a Gilroy City resident and I always enjoy walking and biking around Gilroy. Since COVID, I've noticed more and more of my neighbors and young families, I'm recreating in front yards and kids walking and biking on streets in front of their homes. So I too am requesting to place the Slow Streets program on a future agenda. You've heard from the other speakers already, but I'm just going to reiterate that I think this is a great way for the city to promote outdoor physical activity while promoting social distancing. So thank you for considering adding the Slow Streets to the next council agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker Suzanne.
The next speaker is Sean Reedy. I am hitting allow to talk now. You may unmute yourself.
Good evening, city council. This is Sean Reedy from the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. I too am requesting that Slow Streets be placed on a future agenda item. Others have noted, there are a lot more people out walking and biking right now, but needing to keep socially distant at the same time. I notice a lot in my neighborhood, there's people that are crossing the middle of streets and things to avoid each other on sidewalks. There are some parts of town that are not near any access to parks or trails or extremely safe places to walk and bike while there's other places in town that we've done a great job developing areas. So I'd like to see placed on a future agenda item discussion of the possibility of Slow Streets program being adopted in Gilroy so we can take a look at any situations that might, you know, be able to be aided by such a program. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne, are there any others?
We have one more, that is Ed Solis. I am pressing allow to talk now, you may unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Ed Solis, longtime resident of Gilroy. And in my professional life, I oversee the Open Streets Program in the city of San Jose, Viva Cai, San Jose, where we close six miles of city streets. And so this is a really exciting opportunity to hear that Slow Streets could be considered at a future council agenda. And so I'm here to voice my support and to share my excitement for a potential Slow Streets program. Slow streets provides access to people of all ages and abilities to access the largest amount of public space in any city, which are sit, which are streets that are only used for vehicles. So this forward thinking concept of taking those streets and, you know, allowing people to access them to walk, to bike, to exercise, I think is a fabulous concept. It's a wonderful idea. And I, I'm here to help and support any way I can. So I think it would be a great step forward in public health. Great for mental health, great for people of all ages and abilities to access public space like our streets. And so I'm here again to, to support the future agenda item of Slow Streets. And I appreciate everyone's time and attention to this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Was that the last one Suzanne, confirming? You're on mute.
That was the last one. If anyone would else would like to address the city council, either press star nine on your phone or raise your hand now. We have no additional members, no additional public comment.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item four, reports of council members. Councilmember Brocco.
No report.
Councilmember Armandares.
Yes, I started attending different committees, including the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Group. We had an orientation about that, its purpose and meetings. Also with the High Speed Rail Authority. There was a joint meeting of the Santa Clara Valley Habitat Agency in implementation board, as well as its executive board. So as part of that, along with the mayor and council member Marks. And then the VTA, the VTA committee that I'm on is meeting this Thursday. And also I'd like to report about the the meeting that I partake in with the mayor on every Saturday. And that's part of a convening that county supervisors Chavez and Semidian have with the mayor of each city, as well as a council member to discuss COVID specifically at the county level. So I've been able to be part of that. And through that process, we've been able to draw down resources for our community, right? We we have the hardest hit census tracts and zip code in the whole county. And Morgan Hill unfortunately is, you know, gaining on us. They have a, the second highest infection rate in the county now. And so we've been able to get pop-up sites, a mass vaccination site at Gilroy High School. Some vaccination sites at the senior center. The third one will be this Wednesday and the last one will be next Wednesday, where our seniors can either drop in or set up appointments. And then last Friday, thanks to a partnership with Gardner Health Clinic, we were able to get 100 and almost 150 folks vaccinated Friday from from their, from Gardner's nurses and using their vaccination services. And so I wanted to thank them as well as our city staff, Maria De Leon and Adam and others who've really been doing an excellent job on, on getting our, you know, partnering with the county and these nonprofits and getting our folks vaccinated and taken care of. There was also a food giveaway on Saturday at Gardner, where they gave away over 1,050 boxes of food to our local residents. So thank you to them for, for their work and we'll continue to push for, until we can get our residents safe and healthy. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't realize I was muted, council member Marks.
Okay, yes. The Downtown Business Association had their retreat two weeks ago and discussed upcoming activities and goals for 2021. Depending on what tier the county is in, it'll determine what activities they will be able to do. Gilroy Gardens is still planning on a May 22nd opening, as long as everything goes well. Well, this ad hoc committee began in November and meets bi-monthly. We have been meeting with a variety of stakeholders to get a picture of what is available for the homeless. We have met with homeless people, Jan Shargan, the county residents, business owners and Destination Home. Destination Home shared they have contributed $1.5 million in rent vouchers to Gilroy people on the verge of being evicted. They stated they are a link between the county and city for affordable housing and they are data gatherers. They are a referral service for those seeking immediate shelter and their goal is to keep as many people in their homes as possible. This coming week, we are meeting with the Salvation Army, Compassion Center and St. Joseph's. After that, we will put all this information together to present to council at the study session to discuss how the council would like to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mary Blankley. The South County United for Health. Work is being done to develop Santa Clara County's Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights. A youth survey, a parent caregiver survey in multiple languages have been developed. The deadline for completing surveys is March 5th. It would be great if the city could share this, these links with the community. Santa Clara County Behavioral Health has launched a Get Help Suicide Prevention Campaign for middle-aged males. The campaign includes flyers, website links and phone numbers. The leadership team also continues to support COVID-19 response by promoting vaccine sites to the community, providing input on mobile unit locations, strategizing how to engage communities with high COVID-19 rates and low vaccine rates. So for the Silicon Valley Clean Energy, the S V C board approved a reduction of S V C generation rates by 2.3% to take effect on March. This action is anticipation of a decrease in PG&E's generation rates and the increase in PG&E's exit fee. The rate reduction will remain a 1% discount to PG&E generation rates. While this adjustment is rate, in rates will reduce S V C's planned contribution to reserves. Customers will continue to receive on bill savings while receiving clean power from S V C. To date, S V C customers have saved 69 million due to low rates offered by S V C. Starting in 2025, S V C will receive carbon-free electricity from Central Valley Project, a federal resource comprised of 20 hydroelectric, hydroelectric facilities throughout Northern California, Shasta, Trinity and Folsom Dams. This 30-year contract was the Western Power Area Administration and S V C's first long-term hydropower contract. And it plays an important role as a base resource for S V C's clean power mix and the portfolio. This is enough power to approximately feed 23,000 homes. Historically and currently, a major, a majority of customers are billed electric usage on a tiered rate with prices, with prices electricity based on how much they used. In June, the S V C customers will be opted into a time of use billing rate as part of a mandatory statewide transition. This changes electricity pricing from how much is used to when it is used and a higher prices from four to nine P M. The statewide transition in part, is in part of an effort to better align electricity usage to when the grid has higher penetration of renewable energy sources and help reduce the evening peak electricity demand that uses dirty fossil fuel energy. Beginning in March, customers will be eligible for this transition with free direct, there will be direct communications from PG&E and S V C with more information about the rate options and tips on how to make, make money by shifting your electricity usage for major appliances to off-peak hours. I also want to send a thanks to the members of Gilroy Fire, Local 2805, Ashme local one. I also want to send a thanks to the members of Gilroy Fire Local Twenty-eight oh five, Ashmei Local One oh one, city staff, one of my student interns and a volunteer community members for stopping all those COVID-19 that mobile vaccine sites were mentioned earlier, including the Senior Center, Veterans Hall and Gartners. Thank you very much.
Thank you for mentioning them, Zach.
Okay, thank you. Council member Tovar is absent. Council member La Romanos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just very briefly, the Historical Heritage Committee met last week and we are going to be spending our March meeting looking at our bylaws and our goals for for the committee for this year. So if people are interested in learning a little bit about what we're going to be up to the rest of the 2021, feel free to join us. That's the third Wednesday of each month. And I also just want to give a quick shout out to Jimmy, our city administrator, who led a very productive and efficient staff, not staff retreat, excuse me, council strategy session on Saturday. I thought that was very well done and I appreciated how much ground we covered in a relatively short amount of time.
Thank you. All right, that leaves me. Two two big meetings that happened since our last last council meeting for me, Cities Association. Lots of discussion around the Brown Act because of all these Saturday morning meetings that council member Armand Darris was referring to. I am a member of the Cities Association and then I'm also the mayor of Gilroy, so I go to those Saturday meetings. And because of Brown Act violations that are coming to light from these Saturday meetings on a lot of different levels, from a lot of different groups, I have been put in a rotation. So I've not been able to attend the last two times, but I hopefully will be there next Saturday. Those Saturday meetings are important. I am grateful to have invited council member Armand Darris to attend. It is an effort though among all of us, not the least of which a credit goes to our city staff for participating heavily in getting the vaccinations, both the sites and the vaccines down to Gilroy, limited only by the availability of the vaccines. With VTA, measure B is something we could, we're continuing to make sure that money is coming to all the cities as promised. And there's also a potential change in governance being proposed, governance of VTA that's going to come before Cities Association first. I'm just going to throw that out there. And then lastly, those of you I think already are aware, the public is already aware that VTA is coming in with a transit-oriented development proposal for their property over by the train station. So those are, that's my report. So we will move on to item five, which is future council initiated agenda items. Does any, are there any future, any requests to be considered by the council?
I have a request, Mayor.
Okay.
So as you heard from some public comment, and I gave everyone a heads up about this as well. I'm requesting to place this slow streets program with possible action to adopt the National Association of Cities Transportation Officials Program that reduces traffic volume and speed volumes on those streets to a minimum so people can walk, bike and run safely during COVID-19 on a future agenda.
Okay, do any council members wish to support that? Or is there anything that staff is allowed to tell us about it before before council members say anything?
Madam Mayor, I had a quick question. Could we hear from Jimmy or staff with regard to what that might entail? Just so we have a better sense for.
That's what I was hoping, but these things still confuse me. Yeah. So are we, Andy, if we're allowed to, that would be great.
I think Jimmy could describe very briefly what it would mean to put it on the agenda. In other words, what are you actually putting on the agenda? Obviously, we can't talk about the merits of
Wonderful.
Slow streets thing tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, we're all kind of learning how to work through this as well. This is what I would suggest as your administrator is that we do return with the agenda item, giving you a quick overview of what the program is, what it entails, what staff resources, city resources would be necessary to implement it. We'll do that very briefly and then ask for council direction on whether to proceed and and such. So that that's what I feel would be the best thing for staff to do to make sure that this is heard. But it would probably, I would anticipate, I'd like to suggest the first meeting in April as the first is already, the agenda is finished and the fifteen is already full. So if that if that approach works for camp for council, that's what I would recommend we do.
So Jimmy, that that alone then, are you saying would not be a significant amount of staff time? So it's not like we're committing too many resources before we even know.
Exactly, Mayor. Again, it would be informational. We would give you that explanation, explanation what the program is, what it's going to take for us to do it. And that would be at a very high level. And again, if council decided to proceed, then again, we'd have to have that conversation about is there something else we're not doing at that point or where that fits in your priorities?
Wonderful. Okay, then if that's clear enough to everybody, it sounds to me like we are being asked to do a or I'm asking, I guess, for a thumbs up on having Jimmy come back with some, a very high-level explanation of what this would mean so that at that point, the council can decide if it's something to pursue. And have I restated that correctly? Yes. Okay, so can I see thumbs up then from council members for that? I see a thumbs down from council member Braco. So that would be five to one. Okay.
Right.
All right. So, okay, moving on then, consent calendar. Suzanne, do we have any public comments on the consent calendar?
If you would like to speak on this item, please press star nine now or raise your hand. There is no public comment.
All right, then council, is anybody ready to make a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll move approval.
Second, right? Approval, I mean, a motion made by council member La Romanos, seconded by council member Marks to approve the consent calendar.
A roll call. Rebecca Armandis.
Yes.
Dion Braco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter La Romanos.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar. Marie Blankley.
Yes. All right, passes six, well, six with one absent. All right, item seven. A, this is bids and proposals, award a contract to Bulk Petroleum Contractors or Bulk Petroleum Contractors and Builders Incorporated for the Fuel Station Secondary Containment Components Repair Project Number Twenty-One, P W two six four, and approve a project expenditure of one hundred eighty-two thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. Staff report will be by Gary Heap.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Let me share my screen here. Let me see there. Okay, slide this in here. Can you guys see this? Okay.
I do not.
Do not.
Does everybody else?
I can, you're sharing your screen, though it might be a little small.
Can you see the presentation now?
No.
No, we see your email account.
Right.
That's silly thing to share. Okay, let me go ahead and try again. Let's do that. How's that?
Yes.
That's good.
Rockin' and rollin'. Very good. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Gary Heap and I'm making the presentation for the evening this evening. Thanks for having me. So again, to see this project, the Bulk Petroleum Contractors and Builders, we're working the contract this evening for construction of the Fuel Station Secondary Containment Component Project. First off, the location where this project is at the corporation yard. And you can see the work area here. It's at the northwest corner of the corporation yard, our fuel tank area system. So the existing underground storage tank system at the yard is approximately twenty-five years old. And the secondary containment that we're looking to repair actually captures the fuel or the fumes that the primary system develops if there is a leak. Now, the city is required to test and inspect the containment mechanism every three years to remain in compliance with the California State Water Resources Board government-owned and operated underground service tank program. In two thousand seventeen, there was an inspection and based on that inspection, the city received a notice of violation from Coupa or the Gilroy's Certified Unified Program Agencies due to those repairs that were identified in the secondary containment system. In two thousand twenty, we had another inspection by the state water board and received another notice of violation because the repairs identified in two thousand seventeen had not yet been made. The board has notified us that there will be significant penalties if corrections do not occur. And the city is in constant communication with the board to ensure them that progress is being made on this project. So why does the city have its own fuel tank? And primarily, it's to deal with access to fuel during emergency needs. All kinds of emergencies out there, California, we see earthquakes, wildfires, et cetera. This is to provide access to our fire, our police and our public works vehicles at all times of the day and nights, day, night, weekend, et cetera. We have a electrical generator set up for the fuel tank distribution system in case of electrical outages. And this also helps in terms of providing again the service and and fuel to to our emergency vehicles and our folks that provide those emergency responses to make sure and reduce the amount of delays. You know, if we were to have to rely on on private fuel systems or private fuel companies, you know, they don't have access to fuel necessarily at night. Or if there was an emergency, there might be long lines or they might actually run out of fuel. And so having our own fuel tank really avoids all of that and allows us to have access to fuel day and night throughout any kind of emergency. And in fact, to be prepared for emergencies, our fuel tank itself is maintained at between forty and fifty-five, forty and fifty percent capacity at all times. Now, in January of twenty-one, the city advertises project on the city website and in San Jose Mercury News. On February fourth, the city received two bids for the project in Bulk Petroleum and Contractors and Builders was the lowest responsible bidder. The total bid for the project was a hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And we're staffed, staff is asking for a contingency of sixteen thousand six twenty-five for a maximum expenditure of one thousand or eight hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. This project is being funded by Fund Six Hundred or the Fleet Fund. Based on that information, staffs recommending to city council this evening, the award of contract to Bulk Petroleum Contractors and Builders in the amount of a hundred and sixty-six thousand two fifty for the construction of that fuel tank secondary containment component repair project and also authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents. We're also asking that the council approve a contingency in the amount of sixteen thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars to be expended only with the approval of staff and approved change orders for the maximum project expenditure of a hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. That concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you. So yes, I'm going to go to council and I'm not going to ask individually. I can see if you raise your hand. So if you have a question of staff before I go to public comment, can you raise your hand now? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. So Suzanne, do we have any public comments on this item?
If you'd like to address the city council on this item, please press star nine now on your phone or raise your hand. We have no public comment at this time.
Okay, so back to council, any questions or a motion?
No questions. I would move approval.
All right, is there a second?
I can second that.
Okay, so that was a motion by council member La Romanos and seconded by council member Armand Darris. And I've been reading the motion, but Suzanne, then you do it too. So I'll just let you read it.
This is a motion to award a contract to Bulk Petroleum Contractors and Builders Incorporated in the amount of a hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars with an additional project contingency of sixteen thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars for a total project cost of a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars eight hundred and seventy-five for the construction of the Fuel Station Secondary Containment Components Repair Project Number Twenty-One dash P W dash two sixty-four and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents. Rebecca Armandis.
Yes.
Dion Braco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter La Romanos.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar. Marie Blankley.
Yes, and that motion passes unanimously with council member Tovar absent. All right, item B, approval approval of an on-call consultant selection list for planning services, environmental reviews and historical evaluations. Oh boy, two-one dash R F Q dash C D D dash three-three-zero. Staff report will be by Robert Herrera.
Yes, good evening. Once again, Mayor and Council, I'll be giving the presentation on this item. I will go ahead and share my screen. Can you folks see my presentation slides?
Yes.
All right. So again, this is for the approval of on-call selection list for our planning division in three categories. So much like other divisions within the city, Gilroy, including in particular our divisions that deal with development, we rely on consultants to provide specialized and technical expertise in a review analysis of certain projects. In the case of the planning division, that expertise is divided into three categories. It's planning services, which is technical assistance with various entitlements and developments such as use permits and arc and psych designs whenever needed. And environmental reviews, that's providing research and documentation in accordance so that development projects meet SEQUA standards. And then historical evaluations used. It's technical service used when there are applications involving historical buildings. So our current list was expiring, so we needed to replenish our list. So we issued a request for qualifications or R F Q on November thirteenth, it was published in the San Jose Mercury News. And we requested statements of qualifications in all three categories. Consultants, we accepted qualifications based on category. So consultants can submit multiple qualifications for each of the categories. For example, they can submit qualification for planning services, they can submit qualification environmental reviews. So in total, we received thirty-one statements of qualifications from twenty-one firms amongst the three categories. So with those three, so with those statement of qualifications, what we did is we assembled a committee to review and to score all of the qualifications based on the following criteria that's listed here and also listed on our R F P. Our staff scored those criteria and we looked at data and we deliberated on the data and we came up with a list of qualified consultants for each category and those qualified consultants are listed on your staff report as as well. Please keep in mind that this list does not procure, this list will be used to procure future services on behalf of an applicant or city project. So no money is being committed to a project right now. This list is a pre-qualification list for future projects. And any sort of procurement using these lists will follow the policies and guidelines that are set forth in our city purchasing policy. Applicant projects, they are funded by the applicant in addition to a city administration fee we charge on top of that. And city projects are funded through the traditional budget process, as we all know, going through the financial pro budget process, mid-year budget or error budget amendment. That's how a product project would seek funding first before we would go out and seek a consultant to conduct the scope of services. So with that, staff is recommending that we approve this list of qualified consultants in all three categories that goes into effect March first, twenty twenty-one, all the way to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, with two one-year options available to extend the terms of these lists. And with that, that concludes my presentation and myself and Director Gardner are available to take any sort of questions that you may have.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, council, once again, if you have any questions of staff before I go to public comment, please raise your hand. Okay, not seeing any. Oh, council member Hilton, I see a hand.
Sorry, Mayor Blankley, it took me a little bit to get that.
Sorry, Mayor Blankley, it took me a little bit to get that up there. So I I have a quick, I have a couple of questions for staff, partly because I'm new and partly because I know some of us are working to try to streamline the business and process. And Jimmy, if if these questions go too far into the, you know, the developer's bill of rights, let let me know. But, you know, time is of the essence for permits to be pulled on opening day. We all know that. How do, how can staff ensure that consultants have adequate staffing levels on their side to support the assumed workload or scale of projects that you're pushing onto them? That's one question.
That the first answer I would have for you, Mr. Hilton, is this is the supplemental staff that assist us in meeting those deadlines. So if we don't have this on-call list, we won't have the resources to do these things in a timely manner for developers. So this is the, this is our crutch.
No, no, definitely. And and I understand that. I'm saying, how do you know if that consultant, if you if you if you're giving them a project to do for you, how do you know that they're not going to say, yes, yes, we'll get to it? But they don't have the staffing even get to it. And then we see delays in the process coming back. How can you assure that that those delays aren't there?
Yeah, we we tend to utilize the consultants that perform best and keep their promises and and get us things when we need to. So if we do have a vendor that is not meeting performances and keeps missing our deadlines, we just don't use them.
Okay, so if so, if you if you reach that point where where you're not getting response from from vendors, and let's say a developer has the same complaint, is there, is there a period where you evaluate what the developer is giving you feedback on as well as staff? And has the consultants ever come off the list?
I I believe they have, and I also believe that 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 interaction should be constant, right? The developers should be talking to us and we should be talking to them. So it's a, it's a joint effort. And I believe that's what occurs now, but there's always opportunity to improve. And I think you'll see in the customer bill of rights, we've outlined some more formal methods to make sure that does happen.
Okay, and my my last question would be, you know, when plan checks, building plan checks come back from consultants with a whole list of stuff, are they focused towards the state of California? And then staff removes the stuff that's not needed for Gilroy, or is the developer just responsible for pulling out information that's that's just from from Gilroy? And since they are paying for those fees, you know, as a pass-through, how does that affect everything?
I I believe our community development director could give you a much better answer than I could. So Karen, could you?
Absolutely. So first of all, just to be clear with Zach, I think what you're talking about, council member Hilton, is a different type of consultant than what we're talking about here. You're talking, I think, about building plan check. And actually, that RFP is going to be coming forward later. But to answer your question, for that, you know, we work pretty closely with the firms that do the plan checks. And we continuously review the comments that they're giving out. And so if there's something that's consistently we're seeing that's not really needed or necessary, or we think is overkill, for example, we'll work with our consultants and make sure that they're they're just giving, you know, sort of the level of service that we're expecting.
Thank you, Karen. So has has the council ever been presented your guys' vetting process for these consultants? Or are we completely out of it? There's no like policy decisions on on that?
Well, as far as actually being involved in the consultant selection, that's been done at staff level. You know, the information that Robert shared just very summarily was what we're looking for when we evaluate that, the consultants. And so things like, you know, we look specifically at what what's the depth of their staff? So that, you know, exactly what you had concerns with, we want to make sure if we do give them a project, you know, it's not just one person on their staff that has that expertise, that they have more depth than that, so they can handle multiple projects.
Okay, thank you both.
Okay, I don't see any other hand hand. Oh, is that okay, Rebecca, Councilmember Armand Darris?
Yeah, is there any further? Look, is there any look into the backgrounds of these companies, like whether they have pending wage theft claims or harassment claims? But things like that qualifiers are disqualifying them from from being considered a responsible contractor? Or consulted?
You know, I that's, we don't go that deep as far as digging into that, but it's a pretty small world of consultants and word gets around if if they are are underperforming or, you know, doing something that they shouldn't be doing. That word gets around pretty quickly because pretty much all of the cities around use this these same consultants. And, you know, obviously, they they want to do a good job and stay in business. So you know, that's that's kind of the way, I think, probably actually the best way to check for something like that.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like council member Hilton has another question before I go to public comment.
I do. And this is a policy-related question either to Andy or Jimmy. I'm going off of what council member Armand Darris said. Would that be something that would be appropriate to as a policy if we were to try to get that to put in for something that goes for the RFQ process about wage theft? Or is that generally something that could be put put in, let's say, like the purchasing policy? Where would be the appropriate place for us to to try to put that?
I I can respond a little bit. That could be done in several different places, council members. And I'm thinking, for example, of an RFP that my firm filled out recently to do some work for a city in Southern California, just on a consulting, you know, kind of a as as needed basis. And they asked us to certify that we haven't had wage theft. So that was actually in the RFP that that was one of the things you had, you know, just like saying you don't have conflicts and things. So I I think if it's a council, if if the council feels that's important, that's certainly something that could be incorporated into this sort of RFP process fairly easily if if it was desired.
Thank you.
Okay. Suzanne, do we have any public comment on this item?
If you'd like to speak on this item, please press star nine on your phone or raise your hand. There are no public speakers on this item.
Okay, then back to council. Any further discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this, Dion.
All right. Okay, so council member Brocko, seconded by council member La Romanos to approve an on-call consultant selection list for planning services, environmental reviews and historical evaluations. Twenty-one RFQ CDD three-three-zero. Roll call vote.
Rebecca Armandaris.
Yes.
Dion Brocko.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Pedro La Romanos.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar, Marie Blankley.
Yes, and that passes six with one absent. All right, public hearings, we have none, unfinished business. Introduction of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Gilroy, amending chapter nineteen of the Gilroy City Code entitled Smoking Prohibited, modifying sections nineteen B point two-nine pertaining to parks, finding that the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section one five zero six one B three. And we have Adam Henig to give that staff report. You're on mute, Adam, but we can see your presentation.
Okay, let's try this again. Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Adam Henig, Recreation Manager and Staff Liaison to the Parks and Recreation Commission. As I reported on January twenty-fifth for the past decade, the Santa Clara County Public Health Department has encouraged cities in the county to adopt more aggressive policies to deter residents from using any form of tobacco, which includes smoking, chewing and vaping. This summer, the Public Health Department released its findings from the public, the Tobacco-Free Communities Report, and shared it with the Parks and Recreation Commission. As I explained, the reports show that among the fifteen cities within this county, there are still three that allow tobacco usage in city parks, Gilroy among them. This past fall, the Parks and Rec Commission recommended to city council an ordinance change of the municipal code that would ban designated smoking areas at all city parks. At the January twenty-fifth council meeting, city council voted unanimously to direct staff to prepare an ordinance amending chapter nineteen B, Smoking Pollution Control, to prohibit smoking in all areas at city parks. So here is the current city code where it references smoking in parks. And then below it is what the proposed replacement would be. And as you can see, it's much more succinct and makes no exceptions. If approved, this ordinance shall be in full force and in effect in thirty days from and after the date it is adopted. That concludes my report and I'll be happy to take any of your questions.
Thank you, Adam. All right, council members, raise your hand if you have a question before I go to public comment. I do not see any hands. So Suzanne, do we have any public comments?
If you would like to speak on this item, please press star nine on your phone now or raise your hand. We have no public comment on this item.
All right, thank you. Then that's back to council with any further comments or wait, I see a hand by council member Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor Blankley. Thank you, staff and the Parks and Rec Commission for bringing this forward. You found a gap in in that ordinance, and I really appreciate it. I'll be supporting this tonight, and I just wanted to throw it out there that I know it was brought up during the discussions before that we also don't have smoke-free outdoor dining yet. And so I'd be interested in in working with anybody, whether it's staff or person rec to to get that, to get that put on a future agenda at some point, too. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments or emotion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by council member La Romanos and seconded by council member Armand Darris to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading. Suzanne, roll call.
Rebecca Armandaris.
Yes.
Dion Brocko.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Pedro La Romanos.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Red Tovar, Marie Blankley.
Yes. All right, there's two other motions that I need tonight. The next one is to find that the proposed ordinance is exempt from SEQA. Would anyone like to make that motion and then second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Peter La Romanos made the motion. Who seconded? Carol Marks. All right, this is to find that the proposed ordinance is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section one five zero six one B three, because it can be seen clearly that the ordinance would not have a significant impact on the environment. Roll call, please.
Rebecca Armandaris.
Yes.
Dion Brocko.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Pedro La Romanos.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar, Marie Blankley.
Yes. And the third motion that I would need is to introduce the ordinance.
It'll move.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, council member La Romanos, seconded by council member Brocko. To introduce an ordinance of the city council of the city of Gilroy, amending chapter nineteen of the Gilroy City Code entitled Smoking Prohibited, modifying sections nineteen B two-nine pertaining to parks. Roll call.
This is ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero one, an ordinance of the city council of the city Gilroy, amending Gilroy City Code, chapter nineteen, to modify sections nineteen B point two-nine pertaining to smoking in parks. Rebecca Armandaris.
Yes.
Dion Brocko.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Pedro La Romanos.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Red Tovar, Marie Blankley.
Yes. And for the for the public, this was to this was to make smoking prohibited in city-owned spaces, so public parks. What council member Hilton was referring to earlier was outdoor dining, which is not city-owned. That would be for restaurant, that would pertain to restaurant owners. Just to make sure the public understands that what we just did tonight is for city public parks. All right, next item on the agenda is introduction of new business. Gilroy renters and small business protections during COVID nineteen. This is a an update report that we're going to receive from Maria.
Hello, everyone. I'm about to share my screen. One moment, please. Can you see it?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria De Leon, and I'm the program administrator here in the city of Gilroy. And thank you for having me here today. At the February of one city council meeting, council member Rebecca Armandaris requested a report on programs and protections for renters and businesses here in Gilroy. This report contains information on current and upcoming local, state and federal programs for those renters and businesses facing overwhelming challenges due to the pandemic. Now, since the beginning of the pandemic, the the city of Gilroy has seeked programs and grant funding targeting these two groups as well as entire Gilroy community. And you may recall back at the beginning of the pandemic that city council unanimously voted to designate two-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand, five-hundred from the city general fund to help local nonprofits providing essential services to Gilroy's most vulnerable. So as we all know, the health and economic impact of COVID has been felt everywhere. But with more devastating effect on our vulnerable communities. This, here's a dashboard from Santa Clara County Public Health, and this table shows a breakdown per city. And as you can see, in this, all of the cities in Santa Clara County, the number of cases, the population and the rate of infection. Unfortunately, Gilroy has the highest infection rate compared to other Santa Clara County cities. If you look at the infection rate, it's almost doubled the rate of the city of San Jose. Data from the Santa Clara County also indicates that cities of greater risk of having disproportionate impact of COVID are mostly communities of cover of color. So unfortunately, Gilroy checks all of these indicator boxes. Gilroy is largely a community of color where fifty-eight percent of our population is Latino. The Gilroy's poverty levels are high compared to other cities. Gilroy's poverty rate is eleven point nine, or one out of eight Gilroy residents lives in poverty. And the California poverty rate is fifteen percent. Also, not all Gilroy residents have access to healthcare. And to make ends meet, it's not really uncommon for multiple families to live in one household. And also, many residents work in the service industry or other lower-paying jobs like retail, hospitality, restaurants or food service. So here's a list of local rent relief programs and state protections. So just real quickly, you know, we had a rent relief program that we started back when that pandemic began. It ended just this past month where the money came from CDBG Cares Act. It was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that went to, in this case, the city of Gilroy worked closely with the St. Joseph's Family Center to help distribute these funds for rent relief. Now, we're going to come up to around two, we're looking at spring within only a few months from now. And this money is CDBG as well, but it's titled CB three, part A. So the amount of money that's going to go from that pot to rent relief is undetermined just yet. But we know that Gilroy is going to be designated around four-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars. So when that does come about, the city of Gilroy will work again with St. Joseph's Family Center for that effort. When it comes to federal rent relief programs, we understand that there's going to be Emergency Rental Assistant Program, also known as ERA. That program is set to launch sometime next month. Now, that funding source is coming from the U.S. Department of Treasury, where California has designated one-point-six billion with twenty-six-point-nine million going to Santa Clara. with twenty six point nine million going to Santa Clara County. And these funds are not going to go to the municipalities. They're going to go to the county, and the county will then contractor work closely with nonprofit agencies to distribute these funds for rent relief. In this case, I understand that St. Joseph's Family Center is a designated agency for Gilroy. And then for federal rent protection, we have the California Eviction Moratorium. We understand that that's been extended to June of this year. And that is from the state of California where it prohibits landlords from evicting tenants who are unable to repay back rent due to loss of income from COVID nineteen through twenty twenty one. So here's a list of of business support programs. And so our small business support program that we had ended a few months ago, that was CDBG CARES Act money where the City of Gilroy gave out three hundred and ten thousand dollars to struggling businesses. And we worked together with the National Development Council to distribute these funds. Right, we are now in round two, and it's CDBG CARES Act funds, and we're looking at a hundred and twenty five thousand going out to support struggling businesses, and that's a partnership with the City of Gilroy and the Gilroy Chamber of Commerce. Then we have our federal program, Payment Protection Program. It's called PPP. The funding origin is the CARES Act Small Business Administration. It also provides up to eight weeks of payroll support for for businesses. Here's a list of also some small loans, U.S. Small Business Administration loans, supporting struggling businesses as well. As you could see, the loans range from five thousand dollars to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And specifically, the five oh four loan is limited to the refinancing of fixed assets. This is additional support. So as previously mentioned, California's eviction moratorium ended in June. Well, has it been extended to June twenty one? June twenty twenty one. Other cities and counties and states have taken alternative actions to protect both renters and businesses. So here's just some examples of what other cities have done. Temporary moratoriums on rent increases, the temporary evictions of eviction bans, the adoption of resolutions to voluntary halt evictions during the shelter-in-place order, adoption of emergency resolutions mirroring California's, you know, eviction bans, halting the evictions of small businesses, prohibiting late rental fees while asking landlords to negotiate late payment plans along with their tenants, and also suspending commercial evictions and and foreclosures, as well as halting foreclosures and courts to stop commercial evictions. So those are some examples of what other cities are doing and have done. And this concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you, Maria. All right. Council, please raise your hand if you have questions of Maria before I go to public comment. Okay, Maria, can you note? Well, maybe you have to leave your screen up. I can't see everybody's hand, so maybe shout out if your hand is raised, because I can only see four members at a time.
Dion has his hand up.
Okay, thank you. Dion, go ahead.
Maria. I'm kind of confused. So the the federal government says you can't evict people. The state says you can't evict people. The county says you can't evict people. What's the point of adding anything else? You know, like you said, one one community mirrored the California ordinance. What's the point of that?
Yeah. There's different reasons why municipalities do what they do. They also try to provide to ensure that there's no loopholes, and that's why some folks, some municipalities do resolutions and set policy. But they also come with, you know, there's there are different guidelines. May maybe our city attorney could step in, because I know that he's more familiar with resolutions and ordinances and how they they impact our community.
No, that's okay. Have you had a any residents calling City Hall and saying that their landlord was trying to evict them?
Yeah, they they do. We've had that happen, but there's county resources for agencies, nonprofit agencies, you know, some are local, some are county, that they provide legal aid and assistance and guidance for for families and individuals that are impacted by that.
So you refer them to the county?
I refer them to the agencies that provide the support as well as the county.
Okay, do do you know how many people we've helped with the 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 relief, the funds?
For rent relief?
Yes.
So we just, this past month, we gave out a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in support. The last time I did a report, I mentioned how many people were helped. Let's see if I could find it. But if I can't, I can't locate that right now, but I could go ahead and I'll make sure that I will email you and everybody else the amount of families and households that were supported by the hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, thank you, Maria.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of questions. Okay, council member Armand Darris.
Maria, isn't it true that the the governor's executive order that is through March thirty first of twenty twenty one just allows us to suspend eviction of commercial tenants for non-payment of rent as a result of COVID? It doesn't state it, right? It doesn't, it doesn't give that order, but it allows local jurisdictions to make that, to make that a policy.
I I don't have that response for you. I'll go ahead and refer to the city attorney.
I don't have that response either, to tell you truth. It sounds like what you're saying, Councilman Armand Darris, is correct, but we haven't researched that. If if there's a specific idea that the council would like to pursue, we would be happy to try to figure out, as Maria has stated, where the the state and the county orders fall and what what gap there may be that Gilroy could fill. I know when this matter came up some months ago, back last summer, I think, at that time, the city decided not to proceed with an eviction moratorium, because the county was doing one. And was there was not perceived at that time, I think, and this is answering Councilman Bracco's question. At that, there was not perceived to be a need at that time. There may or may not be gaps now, which we could, we and the staff could certainly look into at this point.
Okay, council member, do you have any other questions?
Yeah. What what protections exist at the county level for small businesses? For protecting from commercial evictions?
I don't have, I'm not familiar with the county programs and how they support small businesses.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to point out that I think Councilmember Bracco's question about number of families. Maria, is that not answered in the staff report, or am I thinking of a different hundred and fifty thousand? Because
I answered, I answered in a previous presentation. I just don't have it in front of me.
Oh, I have it in front of me. It's sixty-two Gilroy households equating to two hundred and twenty-six individuals, averaging three point six individuals per household. The average assistance amount was two thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars. Seventy percent went to extremely low income and thirty percent very low income. Additionally, ninety percent went to Latino Hispanic families.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, is there another council member with a question of staff before I go to public comment?
Just a a quick clarification. So the 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 money that Destination Home has provided for the people in our community with rent release, so one point four million, that's separate from the hundred and fifty thousand that Gilroy has given out, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Suzanne, oh, sorry, yes?
I I had the answer for one of Ms. Armand Darris's questions. Currently, Santa Clara County Commercial Tenant Eviction Moratorium is through March thirty first, twenty twenty one, but it has not been extended as of yet.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, that's the same information I have.
Okay. Suzanne, do we have anybody who wants to speak on this item?
We have a couple raised hands. The first one is going to be Chelsea Mueller. I'm selecting allowed to talk now. You may unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you so much. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Chelsea Mueller, representing the organization Destination Home. We, Destination Home, can attest to the urgent need to support our neighbors' stability as we continue to navigate the COVID nineteen pandemic. For example, the extremely low-income renters served during our most recent phase of rental assistance have seen their income drop by two-thirds since the beginning of the pandemic and owed an average of five thousand in back rent in December. And in the last two months of twenty twenty, our homelessness prevention intake line also saw a two-and-a-half-fold increase in inquiries. Further demonstrating the pandemic's impact on Gilroy in particular, our latest round of rental assistance, which was just mentioned, provided actually the third-largest amount to Gilroy residents, more than one point five million dollars, many thanks to the relationships with community-based organizations who know how to reach and and serve the most in need in in your community. We just wanted to thank you very much, council members, for exploring what additional steps can be taken to protect our our vulnerable members of our community during this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne, are there any others?
Yes, the next one is going to be Vanessa. I'm hitting allowed to talk now. You may unmute yourself, Vanessa.
Hi, Maria, thank you for the great report and also Mayor Blankley for restating the numbers of the demographics served by the rent relief efforts. I think I would like to add that although the county and state and federal eviction moratoriums protect for COVID nineteen-related criteria, given the population that was served by the hundred and fifty thousand and one point four million dollars being predominantly extremely low income and and I think that I would, I would suggest we look at additional more more strengthened eviction protections or rent increase pauses, given the fact that our retail industry will take so long to recover. I think that we have to take aggressive measures to protect our most vulnerable population from things like rent increases or evictions for reasons other than non-COVID nineteen-related income losses. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vanessa. Any other speakers, Suzanne?
Yes, the next one is going to be Diana. I'm selecting allowed to talk now. You may unmute yourself.
Thank you so much. My name is Diana Howery. I'm a resident here in Gilroy, and I, as a resident and also a worker in the community, I definitely, you know, thank you for the time, for the update, and really putting this in on the agenda. I, working with elder population that are extremely low-income and also with dependent adults, I urge the city to take more aggressive measures in protecting individuals that, you know, are at the verge of eviction for many reasons, especially with COVID. And so hopefully, you know, there's could be some measures to extend not just the what the county is doing at the state, but also the City of Gilroy and you, council, to really protect our most vulnerable that are out there in the community. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Suzanne, others?
If you'd like to address the City Council on this item, please press star nine on your phone or raise your hand. We have no additional public speakers on this item.
Okay. Are there any other council member comments before we move on? Okay, who was, who said yes?
I did.
Councilmember Armand Darris. I I cannot see everybody when the screen is shared, so go ahead. There we go. Okay. Councilmember Armand Darris, go ahead.
So I think that, given the amount of of money that has been spent here and that continues to be needed from our residents is testimony, not just from our residential folks, but also from our commercial small businesses, the amount of money and resources that they need, and continue to draw from our federal county and private assistance is is tremendous, and it's not, of course, it's not enough. So that's why I asked that we look into this. The majority of our renters are rent burdened. They pay over thirty percent of their income on rent, and some of them, including the bulk of those in Gilroy, pay over fifty percent of their income on rent. And so the amount of displacement due to rent increases and evictions occurring during this local emergency leads to an increased spread of COVID nineteen, which is why, you know, the CDC and all of our science and medical experts tell us that the best thing to do during COVID is to not evict people, not move people, not abate encampments, right? Keep people where they are so that we're all safer, not just them as individuals and families, but as members of our community, the folks who are charged with, you know, usually charged with evicting or moving people, the sheriffs, you know, it just goes on and on in terms of, especially with the pandemic as easily contagious as this one. And so that's why I would like to request that we issue a prohibition on certain residential evictions, commercial evictions, and that we implement a temporary moratorium on residential rent increases so that we can protect the health, safety, and welfare of our residents, especially in light of this emergency declared for the the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you, Mayor Blankley. Yeah, I I completely second what Councilmember Armand Darris said, and it kind of goes back to Maria's point, too, of that sometimes local resolutions, even though they might mirror what state and county are telling us, oftentimes it's a one-stop document for even like staff members to know if what the commercial moratorium is, because we, none of us knew that. I didn't know that either. So sometimes it's it's a reinforcement. It's coming from directly from the City of Gilroy, which is more powerful to a resident that's here. And oftentimes, it's a good way for them to be able to direct our local people that are calling into staff or just my constituents that might be calling me, too, whether they are a landlord or they're a tenant, to be able to have that information.
Thank you. Councilmember Bracco.
I'm all for helping people, but you're not saying you're going to help them. You're saying I'm going to put it on somebody else's back. The landlord has to eat this. A lot of landlords have already been eating it for almost a year, you know, and they're losing their properties. It bothers me when government, if government wants to help pay the rent, I don't think it's right for government to tell a landlord, you can't, you can't do anything if they don't pay you. When already the federal, the state, and the county have made ordinances to regulate that. I I can tell you from my own experience, I and my rentals, I have two vacancies. They've been vacant for six to eight months, because I won't rent them out, because I'm not going to risk having somebody move in there and not paying me any rent, because it's just like the paycheck protection or the the unemployment protection. When you tell somebody you don't have to pay the rent, they're not going to pay the rent, and then when when things get better, they're going to be so far behind that you actually hurt them, because now the next landlord's going to do a credit check, and it's going to come up that they didn't pay their rent, and they're going to have a really hard time finding a place. And people don't think about that at the time, and they live to regret it later. So I caution the council on doing things that actually makes the problem worse than making it better. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. This is a This is a receive, just a minute, Councilmember Armandara's, because you've already spoken. This is a receive-report item. So I don't know how much more discussion we're supposed to be having on this. We've received the information. I'm going to piggyback on what Councilmember Bracco said, that I am not for getting into other people's contracts. Rent between a landlord and a tenant is between the two of them. So rental assistance is one thing. Trying to say that one side doesn't have to pay while the other one still does have to pay their mortgage is a different story. We already know that the moratorium's been extended through June of 2021 and we know that federal aid for rent assistance is coming, a large amount coming to Santa Clara County. The money goes to the county for that rent assistance, so that's where it will get dish back. How much more discussion are we supposed to have on a receive-report item before we move on?
If I may, I think this is about as much as you can have. If the council wishes to direct staff to bring back a further agenda item with some specifics to it or a further informational item, I think you could do that under this agenda to receive-report, but we shouldn't really be discussing the merits of possible proposals at this time because we have not agendized that.
Well, when I asked for this to be agendized, it was so that we could discuss an actual policy.
I don't think that that's actually what the rest of the council was approving. We were approving Jimmy's comment to bring back a report. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jimmy?
That was what Jimmy added to what my request was.
Well, I know speaking for myself, it's what I was approving, not what you're saying now.
Can I speak for a second?
No, let's let Jimmy. Jimmy, do you have anything to say to what Councilmember Armandara's just said? Or should I see if Councilmember Hilton can say something that is not against what Andy just told us?
I just want to clarify from an administrative point of view that the future agenda items, and this is how I'm going to try to handle them because this is relatively new for all of us, is that they are typically returned with information because a future agenda item is just that, I believe. It's not that we come back with you with a policy and a resolution and such. It's to further discuss so that way you can decide if that's something you want to proceed and then we decide if we want to spend time and resources to. As I, you know, I discussed this evening with Mr. Hilton's suggestion that we come back, we inform the council and seek direction. So I want to make sure that that's okay with council because that's the best way I can think to handle it to at least get councilmembers the opportunity to be heard, get information in front of the council, and then make policy decisions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hilton, what would you like to add?
Okay, this whole process is very clear to me. I understood what Councilwoman Armandara's wants and I understand this now. So it's on the agenda, we're talking about it. There is no action tonight. But Andy, is this not the moment where if Councilmember Armandara's wanted to make a motion and someone were to second it, there would be a motion on the floor to at least direct staff to bring something back? It's not committing us to anything. It's a simple direction. Is this not the point to do that?
I believe directing staff to bring back certain information or proposals would be an appropriate motion if someone wants to make that kind of motion.
Okay, can motions be made? And I'm fine with that. I'm just asking the question because at DGA meetings, they go round and round. Can you make a motion on something that's a receive-report item?
I think we can, yes. I think probably it would be better in future agendas to say receive-report and provide direction to staff. But generally speaking, direction to staff is possible on just about anything because it's not really taking action. It's telling staff to come back and bring us something in the future.
So does it need to be a motion or can we do a thumbs-up thing? How, does it matter?
I think it depends on how specific Councilmember Armandara's wishes to make this.
Okay.
Gets the specifics of saying a policy that would have this and this and this, then it really should be a motion so that everybody understands exactly what it is.
Very good.
Clerk and a vote is taken and people are on the same page.
Yeah, so I'd like, I motion that staff bring us back language that would include a temporary moratorium on rental increases on the eviction of residential tenants for non-payment of rent, for commercial tenants of small businesses for non-payment of rent, that includes a language for the recovery of rent up to 80% with the timeline and also language that protects renters from no-fault evictions or for non-payment of rent due to COVID impacts.
All right.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so there's that motion and a second. So then Suzanne, this would be a roll call. I take it?
Yes, it would. Rebecca Armandara's?
Yes.
Dionne Bracco?
No.
Zach Hilton?
Yes.
Peter LaRomenos?
Yes.
Carol Marks?
Yes.
Fred Tovar? Murray Blankley?
No.
All right. So that's, there were two noes, four yeses, one absent, right?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay. So moving on then to Facility and Recreation Program Needs Assessment conducted by Prose Consulting, Inc., Staff Report, Adam Henig.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Adam Henig, Recreation Manager, and I will be presenting to you a summary of the findings from the Facility and Program Needs Assessment. To optimize the delivery of recreation services, the city hired Prose Consulting in fall of 2019 to complete the assessment. Prose Consultant Nele Bat is with us tonight and can also answer questions at the end. With support from Mount Madonna YMCA for the community survey, this assessment included a robust community engagement process and market research to identify current and future resident needs related to recreation programs and facilities. The research is used in tandem with industry knowledge and an internal assessment to determine strategic priorities for advancing the Recreation Division's operation and increasing access to quality recreation in the city. So to have a successful outcome, the following goals were established for the Needs Assessment. Engage. Engage the diverse Gilroy community through an inclusive and innovative public outreach process. Level of service standards, determining what those are. Identify current and project future needs of recreation facilities as well as highlight revenue generation and partnership opportunities and develop a prioritized needs assessment to ensure long-term success through data-driven and community-values-supported approach. So one of the ways Prose received input was by reaching out to our stakeholders. Approximately 225 individuals participated in the public input process. These stakeholders were made up of residents, elected officials, city staff, members of the South County Task Force, Mount Madonna YMCA, and community advocacy groups. Although interests varied among these groups and individuals, there were a set of common themes that were frequently mentioned: fiscal sustainability, addressing aging infrastructure, and meeting the future recreation needs of the community. They also came up with some of the top priorities. They were to increase access to indoor recreation space, specifically a multi-generational recreation center, providing healthy, vibrant recreation programs to all residents, improving fiscal sustainability by establishing cost-recovery goals, pricing strategies, and performance metrics, understanding the community wants and the needs for facilities and programs, improving existing facilities and infrastructure, and better communicate the value and benefits of Gilroy Recreation to bolster support from City Council and the community. So in addition to the public meetings, Prose Consultants also surveyed the public through a statistically valid community survey of more than 400 residents who participated and provided feedback. These results provided insight into future trends and patterns of use and also how to address unmet facility and program needs. The selection of the responders were carefully calculated to fully represent Gilroy. And as you can see here, things were taken into account such as age, ethnicity, and also how long they lived in Gilroy. So here's a sample of some of the questions that were asked. For example, "Have you or any member of your household visited any park or facility offered by the city of Gilroy during the past 12 months?" 85% of the respondents said yes. Another question was, "How would you rate the overall quality of the Gilroy Recreation Programs in which someone in your household has participated?" More than 75% said they were either excellent or good. There was another question asked. This one was about, "What would you be willing to fund based on a list of facilities and amenities?" The top items were walking trails, new indoor recreation facility, improving the trail system, and new restrooms in parks. And all of this information is in the assessment. Online survey findings. So in addition to the statistically valid survey and the stakeholder meeting, an online survey was also conducted. This survey mirrored questions from the statistically valid survey and also allowed residents that were not randomly selected an opportunity to be part of the community input process. And so here were some of the results. As you can see, the top facility needs: multi-use paved trails, large community parks, multi-use unpaved trails. And the top program needs were community special events, adult fitness classes, and exercise classes. And the items that are in bold were also the top needs in the statistically valid survey too. So you begin to see some continuity in the results. So the assessment also provided an analysis by Prose Consulting that identified the Division's strength, challenges, and future opportunities related to recreation programs. So these were some of their recommendations. They looked at the age segment distribution. So this basically is an opportunity for them to look at our programs and see where are we targeting most of our programming? And what they found was it was mostly among youth and teens and seniors. There was a fairly large gap between those who were between the ages of 18 and 64. And that's primarily due to a number of factors. Part of it is having aging infrastructure, not having the amenities that that particular age group is looking for. Also, that age group is usually working during the day. So to provide them an opportunity to recreate at our facilities would also be to make sure that's also available when they want it. Program lifecycle. So this is basically evaluating where the recreation program is. Is that the beginning where it's just starting out? Is it growing? Has it plateaued? Is it starting to decline? And so they were able to assess where all of our programs are collectively and individually. Financial performance measures. So this actually tracks the actual cost-recovery performance, specifically direct and indirect costs for programs down to the individual program, offering to better assess whether the Recreation Division is meeting its goals. They also looked at pricing strategies, the volunteer program, and marketing. Level of service standards. So a level of service standards matrix was developed during the planning process and this is essentially the city's facility inventory. And it's an effective measure that can be used to support capital investment decisions related to parks, facilities, and amenities. And you can see this in the executive summary on page 13. So based on the projected growth of Gilroy, it was recommended that the city add a number of park acres, trail miles, and amenities by 2024 to keep up with its growing size and the needs of the community. So for example, they had recommended that by 2024 that there be 46 acres of neighborhood parks. Currently, there are 41. Another example was paved trails. Currently, there are 2.21 miles of paved trails. Prose recommends three. And they also did what's called an equity map. So taking the level of service data, Prose also wanted to see kind of where these facilities and amenities are geographically. And what you could see on this map, for example, these are all of the neighborhood parks in Gilroy. So this does not include the community parks, but the residential parks. And as you can see, they're relatively spaced out in the city. There is some overlap where some residents have multiple parks within walking distance while others may not be the case. In this next slide, this is the community parks. So this is our larger parks. This is Christmas Hill. This is Gilroy Sports Park. This is Los Anamis. And again, those circles are obviously going to be bigger because they are able to accommodate more people. But as you could see, they are fairly focused in the central as well as the east and the south parts of the city. Playgrounds are really well-distributed in the city and that's very healthy to see all of those circles and how they overlap. So that's good. But if you look at outdoor swimming pool now, you can see Christopher High School right now is the only public facility and it's located in the northwest corner of the city, leaving out large segments of the population in terms of making it easily accessible. It doesn't mean that residents from the southern part of the city can't get to Christopher. It just means that it's just not as accessible as if it were in a different location.
Adam, I'm sorry, what happened to Gilroy High's pool?
Well, Gilroy High School just renovated its swimming pool.
Yeah.
And the city of Gilroy used to offer programs there, but between the fact that the pool was in really bad shape, which is why they decided to renovate the pool, it was just no longer safe to use. And plus, because of also our lifeguard shortages, we had to basically kind of focus at one facility because we were just spread out too thin. We had literally lifeguards during their lunch shift driving back and forth to facilities.
Okay.
Indoor recreation space. So also, we have, so anyway, so this also shows city facilities as well as GUSD facilities. So as you can see, they're relatively spaced out. But again, those school facilities, they can be somewhat misleading because they're not always available and accessible to the city because school might be going on during those times and also a lot of other user groups utilize them. So moving forward, so essentially, Prose took all of the data and at the very end, they provided the following recommendations. As I mentioned earlier, targeting adults between 18 and 64, recruiting more contract instructors to teach a wide variety of classes to serve all ages and all interests, restoring some of our key fee-based programs that can more than likely recover its costs. These are programs that were formally offered, but they were obviously cut during the budget crisis. Evaluating our fees and charges, seeking a balance between cost recovery and satisfying the unmet program needs of the community. For facilities and amenities, they had recommended taking the existing senior center and transforming it into a multi-generational community center. So instead of building a new recreation center or even renovating Wheeler Center, which would need to be retrofitted, which needs an HVAC and would cost most likely millions of dollars, the senior center is a quick and effective solution to address some of those unmet facility space needs. Creating a downtown park, secure funding for park and facility development upgrades, exploring tax bond measures dedicated to operating expenses. And that concludes my report, but I also have Prose Consultants President Nele Bat available. And Nele, did you want to add anything?
Well, good evening, everybody. It's good to be back with you all virtually. I think Adam's covered this well, but I do want to reference a couple of points. I think Mayor Blankley, when we had spoken, I remember you'd mentioned the emphasis on upping cost recovery, which is what, as you can see in my note here as well, is ensuring that that financial sustainability angle is here. And then at the same time, in looking at your community's demographics and the fact that for a lot of people, you are the only option for some of the program offerings they get. I wanted to balance equity of access as well. So we've tried to provide recommendations that are, in some cases, really low-hanging fruit and staff can start tomorrow and still laying a longer-term vision so as things get better in time and the financial situation improves, you still have the longer-term vision in mind.
Thank you. Yes, I remember our meeting well. This was a very fun report to read and I want to say that the best information I got from that meeting was the advice that we should start with 100% cost recovery. That way, we know what everything costs and then discount from there so that we are aware of when we are going below cost recovery by how much for any number of reasons. whether it's based on affordability, whether it's based on residency, whatever it might be based on. You need to know first what it's costing you to have the programs and then go down from there so that we're all aware of what it is we're subsidizing. Anyway, great report. Counsel, does anyone have any questions of staff before public comment?
I, I do, Mayor.
Okay, Peter.
Just real quickly, Adam, with regard to infrastructure that is currently owned by the school district, I know sometimes, you know, the, the, the public can access, you know, playgrounds or basketball courts and in, on certain schools. Has that been impacted with the closure of schools as a result of COVID? Or is the public still have access to those facilities? I, I'm more of a, I'm more of a runner myself, so I don't, I don't go to the, you know, the basketball courts or anything, but I'm just curious.
That's a great question. And yes, it has been impacted. So the schools are essentially closed in terms of the access to the gym, access to like the tennis courts and the facilities. You may see individuals out there practicing, but in terms of, you know, recreation classes and in terms of organized groups being there, they're not letting any outside groups utilize those facilities right now.
So those are the indoor facilities. What, the, are the outdoor facilities still available to the public at large?
You know, it's, sometimes they're able to access them because there isn't any sort of a barrier to prevent them from getting there. But in terms of the school allowing formal outside groups to use them, the answer is no.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Hill, oh, your hand is down. I thought you had a hand up. Does anybody else have a hand raised?
I do.
Okay, Councilmember Armandares?
Yes, thank you, Adam, and Nele, for the report, I participated in this, a couple of the community meetings when they were held a couple of years ago. And my concern is, you know, being a resident of the northeast side of Gilroy all my life, is that when I calculate the amount of acreage and the amenities list in our Parks and Recreation Guide, which I do every year, we have never been better than having one nineteenth, the amount of acreage of parkland and a fraction of the amenities at the parks east of even Ren, Ren Avenue, right? So if I include La Sani Mas Park, folks on the inside of, of Gilroy and east of Ren or even east of Monterey, don't have the facilities, we don't have a swimming pool anymore, and we don't have the park acreage. Even if you calculate South Valley, South Valley Middle Schools soccer field, which is in, not in very good shape, and the football field isn't, isn't allowed to be used by anyone other than the, the, you know, the Browns and the school. So I'm just wondering, when you were giving the presentation, Adam, you, you, you showed the, the map and you said, you know, it looks like a, a pretty even breakdown, but not to me. It doesn't look very equitable. And if we could look at that again, it doesn't, it doesn't seem equitable at all. As somebody who lives here, and my, my kids have had to use their bikes and roller skates and scooters at Community Solutions, right? And the folks in my neighborhood walk their dogs on Murray Avenue. And, you know, the seniors take their walks on Murray Avenue and Forest, like highly industrial areas. So I'm just wondering, how do we, how is that captured in this report?
Okay, and, and I think what you're referring to is, I had spoken about the playgrounds and how, as you look at all the circles and how there's a lot of overlap throughout the majority of the city, that, that, that's pretty fairly equitable. That's what you want to see. But it, to your point about neighborhood parks, you're, you're right. Actually, use, let's use Monterey as, as the divider there. And you can, aside from San Ysidro and Forest Street, and notice Butcher is not even on here.
Because it doesn't deserve to be, right? It's like, it's big as my driveway.
It, it, it's pretty, it's pretty, yeah, I mean, there's, it's definitely disproportionate, you know, in terms of at, at least length. I don't know what the population size on this side versus this side is and what the ratio is per capita. You had mentioned one nineteenth. I, I, I don't, again, I don't have the numbers in front of me.
An acreage is what I was referring to.
But in any event, yeah, no, your point, your point is well taken. And you could see up here in kind of the, the more of the northwest, west side quadrant of the city, you've got a lot of multiple parks here. You've got the overlapping circles. And again, that's where you're, you're seeing a lot more green space. So, yeah, to your point.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions from council?
I have one, Mayor Blankley.
Okay.
Adam, or this could be for, for Nele. What, was there any talk about trying to get a better or a more equitable portion of the rec guide that sent out to everybody? Have that in Spanish, translated a, a greater portion of it? And also too, speaking of, to Councilmember La Romano, so about the, the use of that, that was actually brought up at a recent GUSD board meeting. Someone wanted to use the track and they affirmatively said, no, public's not allowed to use any of our stuff. And that's the reason why they have those perimeter fences as well.
Yeah, so to answer your question about the activity guide, so about four years ago, there was no Spanish translation in, in the activity guide. And, and then about three years ago, we finally were able to add pages in Spanish, which we didn't have before. Is it enough? No. But it, it really comes down to, as, as everything almost does, is, is cost. Keep in mind, the more pages you print, you know, the more expensive the printing costs are, the more expensive postages and so forth. Doesn't mean that it can't be done, but again, it just more money would need to be allocated toward the entire production of the activity guide, as well as finding, you know, our in-house translators to do that on, on, on a regular basis.
I, I would actually like to jump in on that, please. I, I hope that you've seen in the last, you know, year or so, we've made a very strong effort to do as much as we can in multiple languages. And so that's just going to continue with our recreation guide. And, and seeing this feedback and knowing what our community wants, yeah, there are some financial restrictions, but that's not the, that's not the roadblock or the dead end. It's, it's really if the community, that's what they want, we'll, we'll figure out a way to do that.
All right, how about we go to public comments? Suzanne, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item?
If you would like to speak on this item, press star nine on your phone or raise your hand now. We have no public comment at this time.
All right, council, it's a received report item. Is there anything else that we need other than to say thank you? I, I certainly enjoyed reading it and would love to have all those recommended items. Yay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye. All right, item C. Rescinding, possible rescinding of Gilroy City Council Resolution Twenty nineteen seventy, City Housing Loans for Executive and Appointed Positions, Adopting a Policy for the Provision of Housing Loans to Newly Appointed City Officers, Deputy City Administrator, Department Heads and/or Department Directors. Jimmy will be giving the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. As, as you may recall, in October of two thousand nineteen, the council voted to establish this program that would provide up to eight hundred thousand dollars in housing loans to certain positions, mostly executive, department head, and other appointed officials at an interest rate just slightly above the city's, what they were receiving in the local agency investment fund. As part of that, that adopted resolution, council had directed staff to return annually to review the program to, you know, to update and to make recommendations going forward. Since that adoption in October of two thousand nineteen, this program has not been utilized. And I can tell you, you, you know, the intent was to help with recruitments and to assist in encouraging people to move here, should they, you know, accept employment and be willing to relocate. But today, we've not had any, any demand for it. We've not, it's not been part of any of our negotiations with our executive hirings and such. So at this point, I can tell you that I can't really see a situation going forward where I would utilize this program, nor would I recommend it to the council that you approve a loan, a, a housing loan. And, and the other thing to point out is that right now, interest rates are so low and that, you know, the, the benefit of getting a city housing loan is probably not as great as it once was. And so I would just encourage executives and appointed officers to, to look at the private sector for their housing needs. So I, I would recommend the council that we, we do rescind that resolution as, because, as I'm just not going to use it to be, to be quite honest with you. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, but again, good idea. Just as time has gone on, I just don't think it's really all that practical for our community to do this. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that completes my report.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions before I go to public comment? Or can I go to that and then, okay, so pu- public comment, please. Suzanne, are there any speakers?
If you'd like to speak on this item, press star nine or raise your hand now. There is no public comment.
Okay, council, then it's back to discussion or a motion.
I would like to make a motion.
I'll second it.
That we rescind? I take it?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Marks, seconded by Councilmember Bracco, that we adopt a resolution to rescind Resolution Twenty nineteen seventy, adopted on October twenty eighth, twenty nineteen, that adopted a policy for the provision of housing loans to newly appointed city officers, deputy city administrator, department heads, and/or department directors. All right, roll call.
This is Resolution Twenty twenty-one dash zero six. Rebecca Armandares?
You're muted.
Okay, yes.
Dion Bracco?
Yes.
Zach Hilton?
Yes.
Peter La Romano?
Yes.
Carol Marks?
Yes.
Fred Tovar? Marie Blankley?
Yes, and that passes unanimously, but for Fred being absent. All right, item D. Consideration of, of a resolution of the Council of the City of Gilroy expressing support for actions to further strengthen local democracy, authority, and control as related to local zoning, to local zoning and housing issues. And Jimmy will be giving the staff report. You're on mute, Jimmy.
Thank you again, Mayor. Over the course of several months, there's been a movement from a council member from the city of Torrance and to, to have local jurisdictions adopt a resolution, kind of reinforcing their local control over certain housing issues and such. This is a, is working its way now through the Bay Area. Most of my colleagues in other cities that I've talked to, it, it is coming. Morgan Hill will consider this next month. Palo Alto just did, and, and some others have. Some have adopted it and some haven't. And others just haven't taken action to date. The resolution in its purest form does not bind the city, nor does it direct what you want to do going forward. It is essentially a statement that the city wants to remind the state that some of these issues are best handled at the local level. It is, it is again, a, a statement, and just in that purest form, and not intended to require the council to, to do anything further. It, it, we are going to continue to see numerous state and assembly bills that are directed at local handling of housing and other programs. And this, this one focuses most on housing, but as you'll see, especially in, and during the budget cycle, we have numerous new state and assembly bills that are requiring us to do things that we, we have no control over, but we are to fund and to not have a lot of input on. And so staff is not, is, is, is certainly concerned in that sense and that a lot of the questions that we get asked, I'll give you an example, the first in Kern, housing project apartments and such, we will have no review, no input as to whether or not we, not that we like the project, but how it looks and, and any of the design features. And that is, that is concerning at times, and we just don't have the ability to do that or, and a lot of that's being taken away from us. So I, I understand that there are, you know, a lot of strong feelings about housing in the area, but we also benefit greatly from having some local control over these issues as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I, I did put in the staff report that I basically copied a lot of Palo Alto because they had just done this and they certainly ran through their council. That was approved. And this has been approved by about forty-five different California cities at this time. So again, I'd be happy to answer your questions, but I will give it back to council for your deliberation and ultimate decision. So that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Jimmy. I want to say that I've checked as of today, forty-seven cities have adopted it. Forty-one are in the position we are in right here, right, considering it for adoption, then the rest haven't. It hasn't been brought to their councils yet. So I see a hand by Councilmember Hilton. If you, if you would like to comment before I go to public comment, please do raise your hand. Right now, Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor Blankley. So I'm having a hard time with the fact that a citizen who is volunteering for a council member from a beach town in Southern California has enough power to get an item on our agenda, including a resolution for this legislative body to take an action on tonight. You know, when our own community members and myself are trying to take action to join a regional community plan and homelessness and get that on an agenda with the resolution, and so far, that's been denied. So this is a question for our city attorney. Could you please provide advice on this resolution and specifically the consequences of trying to go after state law in regards to section two of the resolution? And I'll read it for those that don't have it in front of them. It says, "The city of Gilroy will explore various ways to protect the ability of cities to retain local control over zoning as each individual city within the state of California is best suited to determine how the zoning in their city should be allocated in order to meet housing needs of the community."
My answer to that, I think, is that first, twofold. First of all, this is a draft resolution that I gather is circulating, and of course, if the council does want to adopt it, they can change it. It does not have to adopt it in this form. Secondly, I, I don't regard section two as putting any kind of legal, legally binding obligation on the city. I regard it as more, the whole resolution as a statement of policy and section two as a general statement that we'll keep thinking about this issue, and we do believe in local zoning. If the council isn't comfortable with the wording and feels it, it pushes Gilroy in some direction, of course, it could be changed if the council wants to adopt the resolution. But as I said, I don't, I don't regard it as, as creating a legally binding commitment of any kind.
So what kind of, a follow-up on that, what kind of actions or staff time should staff be taking or any of us should be taking to fight state law? Is it a winning battle or is it just a advocating battle?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just the city attorney. I'm not right, taking position on this. I would say, in my, in my personal opinion, if you, if you were asking that, the, the state is overreaching in certain regards. For, and a perfect example happened with our ADU ordinance, which the state passed a hurried ordinance in, at the end of two thousand nineteen in October. And we had about two months, and then by effective January one, two thousand twenty, the city of Gilroy's ADU ordinance was illegal. It no longer complied with the state law because the state had just changed the state law and given the cities no time to react, really. We did end up changing our ADU ordinance about six or eight months later because it took time to do all that. It wasn't a trivial thing. We had to deal with the Housing and Community Development Department of the state, et cetera. So from my perspective, that was an example of a state, the state essentially acting in a sort of high-handed manner and not giving the cities time to react. Because as staff and as city attorneys, we found it very difficult to deal with that issue. Now, there are other state laws here that some cities are upset about and others are not, of the kind that Jimmy mentioned, for example, the SB three thirty and SB thirty-five, which are housing ordinances, which essentially require the city to apply only objective standards. And the state, as we know, has sort of jumped on that and said, if you don't have purely objective standards, you can't, you can't turn down a project or reduce its density based upon subjective reasons. And there've been lawsuits all around the state on this issue. Millbrae just got sued last week on this very issue, for example. And, and opinions differ as to whether that is something that is needed in so, that, that, something that is beneficial and is positive and that some cities really need that and some cities may not. I've never thought Gilroy does need it, but that's just my personal opinion, because Gilroy has been quite responsive to low-income housing. But this is really a policy kind of issue, and I think it's up to each city to figure out whether you feel it's advisable to weigh in uh, on this, on this point, and whether you think it will have any effect is another question, I suppose, also. Anyway, I don't really want to express too many personal opinions on this issue, but it is a very interesting issue, and this, there's always been a uh, balance between state law and city prerogatives and city home rule. Gilroy is a charter city, which traditionally is allowed an extensive amount of home rule. Now we're subject to a whole variety of state laws, mostly in the housing area, which remove our local prerogatives, and that's intentional, clearly, on the part of the state. Whether it's a good thing or not, or whether the city wants to go on record against it, is kind of the issue you might discuss now.
Thank you, Andy. All right, council, Councilmember Armandaris, and followed by Councilmember Marks.
Sure, um, so I'd like to, um, to mirror what what, uh, Councilmember Hilton said in terms of, uh, you know, just a couple agenda items ago. I wanted to place, uh, a a motion on our agenda. I wanted to talk about something. Uh, there's barriers to that, right, and and yet, uh, somebody who just emails us over and over again and works for another politician in some other city of our commu- in of our state is able to get something on this agenda item for for discussion, and so that, um, that concerns me, uh, because we get emails from people, mass emails from people, uh, one person in particular, all the time, and does that person have the ability to influence what we're going to talk about on our city council meetings? It, it is a concern. Uh, in addition to that, um, specific to to this resolution, um, the housing needs of our community aren't being met, right? We're in a desperate situation, and so if the state legislature has to step in and tell all of our different little communities, hey, you're not doing what needs to be done. Um, you need to do X and Y and Z. Well, then, that, that's time for us to look back on what we're doing and what we're not doing, right? It's not time for us to to circle the wagons and say, hey, we have the right to do this or that. We, we all live in this community that's part of a larger community in our state, and, uh, we have a responsibility. And if if they have to enforce it on us in a different way, well, then, so be it. Um, in addition, I want to talk about, uh, the historically, how zoning has been used. Historically, what pre- um, preceded, um, zoning laws were redlining policies, right, where city officials and others worked with banks to redline communities to keep out people of color, right? And so now, the zoning policies have effectively done that, and they've also kept out working people and low-income people from certain parts of our communities. So, we need to take a look at that and about creating equity and and in our community for working people, for people of color, uh, for those that have been historically kept out of certain neighborhoods and certain areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marks.
Well, I have quite a few thoughts. First of all, this has been around for about seven months, and we have been getting, I would say, emails every few weeks, asking if we would go ahead and join. I am very much for affordable housing, and I am for people being able to live anywhere they want in the city, regardless of their race or color. But it comes a point in time where cities have to take a stand, and they can't allow someone who has ever lived in Gilroy to tell us how to design Gilroy. We can design affordable housing anywhere we want, but it needs to blend in with the other buildings that we have here. Alexander Station does not even come close to blending in. And it could have been designed a lot better and still met the housing requirements that it was meant to do. Um, we need to keep our character in in city. No one knows our city better than our citizens and the city staff and the council, because we live here. Being forced to build as many houses as we're being forced to build is not keeping up with our services, with police and fire. And that has to be taken into consideration also. We have to do what's best for the citizens of Gilroy. People moved here for a reason, and if we just start building anywhere without any thought to how those buildings look, we're defeating why people came, and we're losing the hometown feel that made people come here. So I am supporting this. I loved what the staff said on page one sixty-eight, that the person, purpose of land use planning and zoning is to be able to regulate and to monitor land and property markets to ensure complementary uses and to address cumulative infrastructure and environmental impacts. Growth must be paced, evaluated, measured, and planned for what is unique to the city and community and its best interests. Why have a general plan if we're not going to do what's best for the community and the citizens? People spend a lot of time working on that plan, and I just hate to think that total strangers come in and tell us what we're going to do, because they think they know what's best for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, I, I'm just going to say that I believe our constituents expect us to stand up for local control. I think they already assume and expect that we have more authority than we do. And we're constantly, or I know I am constantly having to tell people, I don't have jurisdiction over that. I can't change that. So to me, this is a case of where the state is doing what the state needs to do. There are, there have been instances where they have overreached, and this is an opportunity for the cities who wish to push back some and say, hey, you're stepping on our ability to run our own cities. Our constituents elect us to know what, to to vote on what to do with our city, and our constituents may not realize just how much of our authority is being taken away, and I believe that they expect us to stand up for them and to stand up for ourselves. And that is my position on on this issue. Councilmember La Romanos.
So it's funny you just said that, Madam Mayor, because I was kind of thinking the same thing, that oftentimes, people assume we have jurisdiction or control over a lot of issues that we really don't. So i- it's kind of a narrow band of of control that we already have, and it's a pretty limited area if people are actually looking to what we do control. Uh, you know, I, again, I, I, we are elected to represent our, our constituents, we're elected to represent the community. I think we have the best understanding in which to do that, um, but still, that doesn't disavow, you know, some of the other obligations we have to meet some of these housing issues. So that's, that's another issue in and of itself. I'm just bringing it to the theory here today, which is talking about local control. Now, how that articulates itself or how that plays itself out over specific issues, whether it's housing, whether it's traffic, whether it's transportation, whatever, those are specific case-by-case issues. But I think the larger concern for this is just around preserving the, our specific areas of control that we already have. The state has their area, we have ours. This is just getting to preserving the space that we control, and it's not about a specific area, whether it's housing, transportation, or something else. So I just wanted to clarify that for people who might be, uh, might be listening in or watching from home.
Thank you. Councilmember Braco.
Yeah, I I want to, uh, say I agree with, uh, the mayor and, uh, Peter a- and Carol. Um, I I'm for local control. We spend millions of dollars on a general plan and specific plans that have citizen buy-in on what they want their community to look like for the next twenty years. And I don't think it's right that the state can just come in and say, you got to do it our way or the highway. So, I'll support this.
All right, thank you. So I'd like to go to public comment. Uh, Suzanne, is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on this issue?
If you'd like to speak on this item, please press star nine now or raise your hand. There is no public comment at this time.
Okay, then it's back to council and ready for, i- if anybody would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution expressing the city's support of efforts to retain and strengthen local authority.
I have something to talk about before we do a motion, there, or I could say it after the motion's made, that's fine.
Okay, how about this? We have a motion by Councilmember Braco. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Marks, okay, so let's go to Councilmember Hilton's comment.
Thank you for allowing some discussion on the motion on the floor. Um, so just in regards to that A D U ordinance that the state passed, um, we simply could have just used the A D U ordinance that the state passed. There was no requirement that we create our own A D U, but this council decided to do a more restrictive A D U, so that's why that passed. Um, you know, there's many examples of how retaining local, local control has pretty much failed us. Um, Gilroy's elected state legislators, um, have stepped in to close that gap. We can implement and change policies quick enough. When we do have the option to create policies like an objective design standards in order to react to state law back in two thousand seventeen, no one here brings it up. Our current housing element calls for a vacant land inventory to be published annually, and we haven't done that since two thousand fifteen. Those are just two reasons why I support not having local control. When it comes to regional hi- issues like housing, local control can be taken away, can, has been taken away, because elected leaders of the past have failed to listen to the needs of all their constituents. That's why I would not be supporting this.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution expressing the city's supportive efforts to retain and strengthen local authority and control as related to local zoning and housing issues. Uh, Suzanne, will you please do the roll call vote?
Yes, this is Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero seven, Rebecca Armandaris.
Yeah.
Dion Braco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
No.
Peter La Romano.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar and Marie Blankley.
Yes, that motion passes four to two and one absent. All right, that brings us to, Dion, your hand is raised. Is that for something, or you just haven't put it down?
It won't go off.
Oh, okay, there it's off. Okay, that's fine. All right, Jimmy, city administrators' report.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Real quickly, I have two items. Uh, one, uh, we do, the city does have a confirmed date for mattress recycling. That'll be on April third from nine to two, and that will be at, uh, Civic, uh, at the Civic Center. Uh, we'll have more specific maps available for people to know exactly where to do that, but that will be, uh, that will be coming up. We also, this weekend, uh, had supported some cleanup efforts along the creeks, especially along San Ysidro Park, where we, uh, we worked with, uh, our nonprofit partners to have a dumpster out there over the weekend. Uh, I imagine we'll be trying to do more things like that. We're going to learn, uh, the good, the bad, and and whatever, and doing so, but it is a start for us. And so, uh, any, anytime we can keep garbage out of the creeks and into one of those dumpsters, we'll be happy to to help on that, um, that, that ma- that method. And I just want to tell, uh, everyone, thank you for all the assistance. Everybody has been, uh, pounding the pavement, including our elected officials, our staff, um, and and getting these COVID sites, uh, staffed, and we have been trying where we can to help with some resources or some infrastructure, uh, even for our nonprofit partners. So again, it's, it's, it's working, it's, i- it will get better, and it's just, it's going to be slow progress. But thank you to everyone all the way up and down, uh, who has been helpful in this effort, and we've got a lot, long way to go, but, um, so far, so good. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Andy, city attorneys' report.
Uh, I have no report, but if you like, I can, uh, announce the closed sessions.
Please.
Okay, there are two closed sessions. They are both public employee appointment slash employment pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven and Gilroy City Code section seventeen A eleven two for the positions of Finance Director and Public Works Director. And once going into the sessions, the, uh, first thing to do is to take a, um, a vote on whether or not to stay in closed session.
All right. So do I take that vote now, or?
No, no, we, we, no, we don't take it now. We only take it in advance for litigation.
Okay.
For these purposes, we now ask whoever's in charge, Scott or Jimmy, to, uh, clear the room, go into closed session, and then, uh, take the vote to remain in closed session.
Very good. I assume somebody is clearing the room.
Uh, I'm working on getting people out, and then I will transfer hosting duties to Jimmy.
All right, thank you, Suzanne.
Mm-hmm.
Leave me and Suzanne, please.
Yes.
I am, uh, transferring you to, let me, uh, end the livestream.